Good evening, everybody. This is the July thirteen twenty twenty-three. Meeting of the Dayton Public Library Board of Trustees. The meeting is a hybrid meeting and will be open to the public through the Zoom conferencing platform. Instructions to participate were posted. And a recording of this meeting will be posted on the Dayton Public Library's YouTube channel. Begin with a call to order and a reminder that all votes will be taken by voice vote with each. Member announcing their name and their vote. Following the meeting to order, we'll call Ronald Connor Chair.
Reader Rujia trustee.
And lights and trustee.
Jocelyn Tavarez Director.
Thank you. First out of my business, June eighth meeting minutes to be approved. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June eight twenty twenty-three meeting of the trustees.
Reader Rujia, I make a motion to re- approve the June.
Eight.
Eight. On meeting.
And lights on a second.
Okay, we have a motion and second day discussion. Questions, comments. Aren't any will vote. Ronald Connor, I.
Reader Rujia, I.
And lights on, I.
Motion passes minutes of, thank you, Jocelyn.
Thank you.
Item of all businesses update on two oh seven Main Street.
I spoke with the town administrator yesterday and he just updated me on. They're going through procurement processes for an on-call electrician and plumber for the town. And as well as architectural services that we need to procure again. He and I will be working again on a project budget to update it. That will help us plan for a new library building committee meeting. We're also trying to schedule a meeting with. The Mass Cultural Council's. I don't know what his exact title is, but he oversees, he's the. Project manager maybe of some of their grant programs. And he's willing to meet with us. He's just out some of this week, so we're scheduling some time in common to. Try to get feedback on our. Grant application and see where the state is with funding for fiscal year twenty-four and kind of keep the conversation going. So that's. A little bit too, that's new since.
New fiscal year, we'll get back to work. With good message.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Great, next. Um, new business, our statistics.
Um, we just finished fiscal year twenty-three. So. We finished higher over the last fiscal year. And we're off to a good start this July, if this week is any indication of. Busyness with summer reading. So hopefully, we're. Returning to trends that we had prior to. COVID, I guess, really. So summer's been busy. I don't have too much to say. This, I was looking for different ways to display. Those statistics or show comparisons. But with our electronic resources in particular, I started counting. Them the same way that the state and federal government count them. So, or I used to report to the board. The number of times something was used where people were logging in or downloading or checking out. We get credit for like patrons now and when they act, when a patron would actually. Engage with some kind of content. So I didn't feel like we had apples and oranges. To do that with. The exception is the New York Times on our. Um, list. Those are the number of times that. Someone redeems the three-day period. And I. It was only because the way that the statistics came back to me for the last six months included those kinds of. Um, they included the number of. Vision visions. The number of times of engagement with the New York Times as opposed to the first half of the year where they, I didn't get all that. I can go back and ask, but. That feels like a long explanation for. What's happening. So we've, we've seen good usage on a lot of the products and I'm reevaluating. A few things to invest some of our funding into the places that get used. Namely, the ebook collections, audio book collections, because I can't. It, it's been difficult to keep up with the demand there, so. That's my approach going into the new fiscal year.
Well, I think it's important to have a diversity of options for folks, you know, some people. So I think we have a nice mix of. Nice mix of. Digital resources and that's good. And even if some are only used a few times.
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay. All right.
So, again, I'll try to make time to. Do more with coming programs around our options or training. It, that's. Just falls to the wayside. Very easily.
Sure, there's a lot going on. All right, anything else about statistics?
No, unless you have any questions in particular.
Okay. Iris.
So this is always an informational point. This is the time of year when our state reports begin to. Kick in and we start to work for that. So the Eris report in particular is the statistical report. That we do first in order to. Participate in the stated program for libraries. So that just, I, I again, I'm gonna hope to have that complete for the August meeting. It's usually due toward the end of August. Um, so I'll try to have it for this meeting to kind of. Present it a little and.
Am I the only one who can sign that?
I don't think, I, I think they prefer a chairperson, but I don't think. Um, if another member of the board does, I don't think there's a real issue with it.
Just, just checking. That's fine. I don't, I don't mind signing it, just.
Yeah, no.
Circumstances where we just want to get it signed. But it asked.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll look for that in August.
Right.
We received a donation.
We received a donation of seventy-five dollars from a Dayton resident and. I. Will, you know, obviously acknowledge that to him. I just wanted to know if there was a place that you thought. A gift account it should be with now that we're. Starting to talk about. The friends are starting to do fundraising for the building and. So I didn't know if he wanted to designate that. There was no designation.
Yeah, okay.
Um, in the note, it was, this is, and this is also a repeat gift each year. And he'll send us something, so.
So it might be okay if the, again, what, what comes to mind is if the friends were working on a brick. Thing. We could check with this person and see if they wanted that.
Yeah.
Friends haven't really determined yet what they're going to do. Um, there's pros and cons about having bricks.
Okay.
And they've also talked about donating a piece of furniture and putting a little plaque.
Yeah, or the shelves or.
Sure. And the friend, what the friends are doing are, they've been accumulating some money. Once they reach. X amount of dollars, then they'll turn it over for the, the building like. And they're almost it.
But there's a threshold that they wanted to reach before they made a formal donation for the building gift.
So this donor has given in previous years, what, what have we done?
I, um, we, we've deposited it in with the, the regular library gift account.
Okay.
All right, I can continue.
So we haven't used it.
No.
So accumulated, it could accumulate to a point where. It could be used for purchasing a piece of furniture.
Yeah.
If that person wanted that to happen. So let's just continue to do that.
Okay.
If we need to vote on that, just my opinion, so.
Um, I guess it formalizes it nicely if you want to, just so it's documented.
Yeah, probably a good idea. So I will, I want to stand a motion to accept the gift of seventy-five dollars to the Dayton Public Library.
And to deposit it.
And to deposit it into the library gift account.
Either that we accept the gift of seventy-five dollars and deposit it into the. Library account.
Library gift account.
Library gift account.
Okay, and might send, leave the motion. Do we have a second?
Reader Rujia, I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Ronald Connor, I.
Reader Rujia, I.
And lights on, I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this person wasn't expecting any kind of report on how the funds were spent, the nose.
No.
It's a yearly.
Um, I don't want to speak for future years, but it's the last few years.
In someone's name or anything, or they just.
No, he just, he sends a little note that says, thank you for all you do and that's a donation.
Very nice.
It is very nice.
Yeah. Okay.
And appreciated.
Okay, so never asked, oh, what did you do with it? He's just happy to give it, so.
Right.
All more reason if we can find a nice opportunity.
Yeah, that would be nice to commemorate.
Yeah, if, if he's open to that. All right. Next is the Pearl Crawford Library in Dudley closing.
Um, I sent you that email because. I thought that. Well, first of all, it's alarming to see something like that. Um, that the, just to refresh, the library director of the Pearl Crawford Library. Kind of announced to. The state library listener that they were closing effective sometime, it's in a few weeks, July. Um, in following up today, just to see where that stood. It seems that. At their, at the Dudley Town Meeting, that a budget was approved for the library. And it was, their operating budget was cut by ten percent. Layoffs notices did go out for the. The staff and the director. The library was slated to close, but there's also. Further clarification that. There is. A special town meeting. On. Like July. I don't have the date, July twenty-fourth. That if that passes. They will go to an override vote in August with five different. Questions, so that the town. Can pick and choose. What thing, what services to fund. And this is all to make up an almost one million dollar. Shortfall in the budget due to the school side of things. So I just wanted to clarify that there's a possibility that they remain open past. July twenty-fifth. I think it'll affect their operating. I don't know that they're gonna. Straight out close. I still think it bears watching just from. The learning perspective of what another town is going through.
Yeah, especially because I believe in the circumstance, police and fire. Were also cut.
Yeah.
And so it's, I wasn't, I knew that there was another possibility of. A plan to, to, to rescue. Um, certain accounts and. But sounds not like there's gonna be a list. Do you prefer police, fire, library, you know, what's your?
No, then there's five different more.
Yeah, so. So it will be hitting one. One service against another and.
And it's like the town hall services and then the library separate.
Yeah.
How big is their library?
They have one of the newer libraries that was built.
What's the town population number?
I don't remember what their town population is, but they, I remember.
The population was eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-one at the twenty-twenty census, so it's bigger than Dayton.
Bigger than Titan.
And they're in a district with Webster for school, is that right?
I.
County.
Yeah, Webster Dudley just comes to mind.
Um, that's possible.
Yeah.
I just know that, um.
Well, bears watching, I think. Thank you for. Calling it to our attention.
It's Dudley Charlton.
Dudley Charlton, okay.
Yeah. But they do, they do have a new library. Anyway, I mean, now it's probably like ten years older or so, but. That has its own set of. Issues because they accepted the state grant money and.
Wow, yeah.
They have to be certified for so long, like there's a lot.
Going on, yeah.
To. Learn from, I guess. And I just wanted to point it out because it just.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Well, we'll keep an eye on it.
Yeah, I. And I forgot to pass these. That's the next.
All right, next item on the agenda is the. Massachusetts Library System, Massachusetts Library Association, Massachusetts School Library Association, Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Joint Statement Against Censorship and Intolerance.
Um, so they issued a statement about. The increase in. Book challenges and. That same activity that has been seen on any show that I have. And. I just wanted to make sure you all saw it and were aware of it. If you wanted me to do anything with it or. Um, there's also, and I wasn't aware of this until today, there's. A way for people who support this statement to sign on to it on the MBLC website.
It's great, yeah. Oh, I see, yes. Endorsing individuals, it's kind of.
There's more than I didn't.
Yeah. What, do we have? The, the way of statistics on the number of book challenges in Massachusetts, I didn't see it in here, but I wonder.
Um, I can probably find.
Remember somewhere that we, depending on what we do with this. I think that would be helpful. Because they talk about the. Oh, book challenges have quadrupled in just one year or so. And this is an asterisk here, so it's probably a reference.
Yeah.
Just didn't see that. Any thoughts about this?
Interesting to see what that will want if they get a pass.
Right, um. The references to the legislation on. Funding tied to removing books from the shelf essentially. That are. I don't have the language, but I should. Send that and.
So. I think one question for local libraries is. I have an opinion about this, but the extent to which. These statements from state organizations. Um, have. You know. Require a similar position for local libraries. It's gave. Statement like this, certainly for my position. Um, strengthens our position and boldness to continue to take the position we do.
Yeah.
But does this have the, may not have the force of law, but they do represent, they, they do reference the state law chapter seventy-eight, so. Um. I, that, my, my only question is, again, what I'm trying to say is. We are, well, are we required to abide by this statement, the words in this statement, or is it, is what they're saying, it is pretty much what we're already required to abide by?
I think it's. It's a statement that says, I think the intent is to stand in solidarity with. Librarians and libraries who are trying to uphold. Those First Amendment principles while taking. While having those difficult discussions with patrons about. Um. Books with. Concerned. Or books that have topics that are.
An individual doesn't like. Their particular dislike.
So, um. That's what I think this is. I don't know if it. It may be if. The statute that they're discussing passes, then that's a whole different thing and that will have. Some. Force behind it, you know?
Yeah.
And that it's basically, I believe it's a similar. Um. I believe the language and the intent is similar to the legislation that passed in Illinois recently.
Well, so what I, what I see here is I, unless. Unless these organizations or MBLC in particular is planning to socialize this through any particular process, is I see an opportunity here for. Us, because some people aren't gonna read the whole thing, and if we can pull out things from this. Periodically on, on our Facebook page, you know, you see these quotes. And there, there's some really good pithy statements that's here that I like and rather just sort of pull it out and reference this document, but. Um, if, if you can sort of think of ways that we can communicate. Particular statements that are in here, like each of these bullets is probably, you know, one posting. And you can cite the full document if someone wants to read the whole thing, but if we put these messages, because they're important messages in each of these bullets, I, I, I love the attacks on members of our communities. Targeted margin, marginalized people, essentially, the one at the bottom, you know, you can start. So you got my idea, Jocelyn, I, you know, we just think it through, we can talk about it next month, but it was, um. People visit our sites or, you know, if you can dedicate. A space to the newsletter or to the webpage or you get the idea. I just think it's a, it's a good way of kind of getting it out there and keeping it, keeping it alive rather than. We were to send it out, which I, I think we should find some way to get it out to people or link, but to continue the messaging, because it's very powerful. Um. That would be my only thought. Other. Questions or comments about this?
Did you send this out as a email?
It would, might have been. Earlier in the week.
The agenda?
Yeah, I don't remember the names. No?
I don't, I, I know. No, no, it may have been with the agenda, but.
Oh. Agenda, agenda.
I don't.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was on.
The town, our town email address.
Yep. I didn't get it.
Oh.
All right, well.
Last one I got from you, Jocelyn, it's dated six, seven, twenty-three.
That doesn't sound right.
Yeah.
I don't remember what my password is. I'll have to go home.
I did it Saturday.
I'll have to go home and sign in. I don't have my password. Okay, I usually get everything, that's the thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Nothing else about that, we'll move on. Any public input? Anybody on? Do we have an update from Zach? Is Zach on?
Um, Zach. When I last saw him, he had talked about joining us, but, um, he's not.
All right.
With us. I think the big part of. What he wanted to discuss was the golf tournament.
That's in September?
September, yeah, September seventeenth at the Hazelton Golf Club and with us. Um. So. All right, that's the. The big news there, I think, is, am I missing anything with the friends?
No, they're just looking for sponsors and, you know, getting the word out and. Getting maybe donations for raffles or donations for, you know, like.
The different levels.
Places, yeah. Um. I ran into person Ken Pacchico. Somewhere recently and. They asked if, you know, if volunteers were needed to help with the golf tournament. I said, sure, so I've got to tell them they would like. And then also do the, the chicken dinner.
Yeah. And you can buy just tickets to the dinner, because some of us don't go.
Right.
Is there anyone here who still golfs? I golf, but I haven't golfed in a long time and I wouldn't golf that day.
I got ring like clubs a few years ago, because I said, I'm done.
Yeah, um.
They're also having a golf tournament at that golf course. This summer. The, I think the football boosters is having it. They've been advertising it on Facebook.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I do many golf.
We might, we might have that tournament someday too. We'll work on that.
All right. Nothing else, then we'll move on to upcoming programs.
Summer reading, our first real full week. Was this week and we started with, we, I shouldn't say we, I had no part of it, the teddy bear tie-dye program. It was jamming over here.
What was that one over there?
That's one over there. I think someone left that behind. Um.
Nice.
And yeah, it was nice. The, um. Wednesday was a bird walk. Laurie's doing. Bird walks at the different parks on Wednesday mornings. Now Wednesday was a warm day, so I don't know if that affected anything or, but. Um, next week is at. Offspring Landing, which is the park at the boat ramp. So that's Wednesday at eight o'clock and then. Summer reading, she's been challenging kids. To beat her. This is how much Lori has run.
Oh.
So she's challenging kids to compete with, against her.
Nice.
And I, it just, it, it's been busy. Things are going well with summer reading and. I think all the, the books that the friends purchased in support of it are gone, like they've been distributed to people and. Hopefully we keep going strong and. We have crafts coming up and, um, just busy.
And next week is.
The concert.
The concert.
Yeah, um. It's a cultural council. Partially funded event, um. Partially funded event, um, the band, it's a duo called Knock on Wood. And um. I can't remember, I, Howie. He's a reporter, um, or was a reporter. But Howie Newman, and he brings, he does um, kind of like folk and rock. Covers and he has a few of his own. Um, pieces that he's written and it just looked like a fun.
Yeah.
And it's in the pavilion.
It's in the pavilion, um, I probably, it's next Thursday.
It's seven, seven.
Boston acoustic folk rock duo.
Yeah. I need to um. Probably remind people to bring their own chairs for that length of time, unless they want to get up and dance, that's fine too, but. Um, just, it might be more comfortable if people brought their own chairs, so that was just a late thought I had this week.
Yeah, those benches get a little odd.
Yeah.
What time is it again?
Seven o'clock.
Get on my calendar for it.
Yeah, I'm taking you out to a concert tonight.
Alright. Well, that sounds great. Um, so the library did a. Did a cultural council grant for this?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Um, Nurse Nikki's book group.
So um, I didn't bring the flyer, but our town nurse and um newest. Board of selection. Member um is running a book group with us. Um, their first meeting is August first, it's a Tuesday night. And they're reading a book called Beach Read by um Emily Henry, who is. One of the more popular recent authors, um that people have been. Interested in reading, um. Nurse Nikki is looking to do this um. Like every other month. So the next one would be not until um October.
What are they meeting?
We reserve, for this one, we reserved at um Old Town Hall, yeah. It's. It's more comfortable if we can get it, um. So hopefully, we get some people to join in, um.
Has she got, has she got a list now?
Of.
People that are.
There's one person I need to get in contact with, he said they, who left a contact. Um, address, but um. So that person I need to get in touch with, but um I'm still waiting for some books to come in. When we first looked at how available the book was, it was available, but a book called Beach Read. Might be a little more difficult to get in the summer and um this author has a new book out, so if people like the. Newer books, then they're gonna read the older ones, so.
Yeah, good.
Um, but that's, hopefully it'll.
Yeah.
Take off.
So is there a flyer or somebody's spread the word?
We have um flyers at the library, actually, I think there's one on the bulletin board. In, out here, at the lower level uh main entrance. We have some upstairs, we have some in the library, so um.
Did in the Facebook page?
I thought I did.
I, I haven't looked at the Facebook.
Um, I know we did the poll on the Facebook page, I might, maybe I didn't post the actual event yet, I have to do that.
That would be good, the more we can promote it, the better, let's get it off to a good start. Especially in the summer, it can be a challenge to get.
Right, right.
Fall.
Um. No, and I, you know, I don't know what to expect, you know, with the first of anything, but sometimes it takes. Siri, I'm sorry, um.
Go back to sleep soon.
So sometimes it's hard, it it takes a little bit to grow legs, so we're, you know, willing to give it that time to grow, so. I can't think of anything immediately.
I hope I can remember my task work to get into that, if not.
We'll figure it out.
Figure it out Monday.
Yeah, okay. There's nothing else, I want to say in a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn with Ann Lightson, Reader Rujia was second.
Okay. Well, she made a second, seconded to adjourn, we'll vote, Ron O'Connor, I.
Reader Rujia, I, and Mike's an eye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
That shut off.
Thank you.